All the roll please. Mayor Mitchell, here. Councilman Best.
Present.
Councilwoman Bravo. Councilman, go ahead.
Here.
There's a question. Thank you. All rise please for the invocation.
Daniel. Daniel. Much excited to know.
All the roll please. Mayor Mitchell, here. Councilman Best.
Present.
Councilwoman Bravo. Councilman, go ahead.
Here.
There's a question. Thank you. All rise please for the invocation. Our heavenly father, you are known by many names and worshiped in many ways. We ask for your blessings for all that are gathered here tonight for our beloved Miami Springs. Remember those, remind those of us on the council that we are not only eaters of our community, but also servants with responsibility to consider and serve the common good of all. We ask for the wisdom and the courage to speak out when it is time to speak out, to listen patiently and respectfully when it is time to listen, and to make decisions based on what we know to be right and good. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Amen. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has stands for one nation, a free, open, and equal democracy. Welcome everyone. Thank you for being here for our December 12th city council meeting. It's nice to see so many faces in the audience tonight. Our first order of business, under the order of business, I wanted to, with the council's consent, move some items around. I wanted to move item 4B, the presentation, if I can press now to, to be presented after item 7A, which is the report for the Business and Economic Development Task Force. I think it's a better fit with the council's consent. And then other thing is I'd like to move the items in the presentation, in the reports from the boards, move the three, let's see, item 7B, C, and D up before item 7A because I think those reports by our advisory boards will be shorter. And then we can, I anticipate that perhaps the, the report by, from the Business and Economic Development Task Force would be longer. And the other item is I would like to move item 11A to right before item 13.
Okay, with that, Mayor.
Right? All right, thank you. Um, okay, so our first agenda item, then we will be with the awards and presentations, and we have swearing in ceremony for our new Miami Springs police officer.
Mayor, council. Uh, now normally, I'm just wearing an officer. Officer Gonzalez just called. And Gonzalez, uh, was born here in Miami. Went to Everglades Prep Academy High School down in Oakwood State, and he has his bachelor's degree from that by youth justice. He said that, uh, first realizing he wanted to be a police officer in the sixth grade. He saw a presentation by the, uh, this candidate. Uh, he was a police explorer through high school, and he started with us as a dispatcher in October 2020. He just recently graduated from the police academy. He's joined in here with us today with his mom, grandparents, sister, brother-in-law, nephews. Married him to, has two kids, but his kids are under the weather, so he couldn't make it very soon. Oh. Um, Mr. Let me, uh, please raise your identity. I state your name. I solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Florida against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, to uphold and enforce the laws of the United States, state of Florida, county Miami-Dade, and the city of Miami Springs. That I take this obligation freely, not in mental reservations for purposes of invasion, that I will well and faithfully discharge as a police officer in Miami Springs, acting to the best of my ability.
Yes, absolutely. And Officer Gonzalez, on behalf of our residents, and sure of our council, myself, or our city, we're honored, privileged, and very grateful to you and your family that you have chosen Miami Springs to, to be a police officer, to join our police department. Thank you. Of course, as many as you like. What is more touching than to hear grandmother say, "Cariote vendiga, no, it dies," makes her raise tears to your eyes.
Maria, Maria, just read my part.
Right, every grandmother's.
Dear you, I'm sure you'll believe me, my mom turned 103 in November. Wow. And to this day, she lights a candle for me and for my son.
Every day, oh.
It's healthy.
These are your classmates in criminal justice?
From the police academy.
Oh, from the police academy. Oh, wonderful. Thank you all.
I know some of you, all of you. Or able to find them. And this gentleman, uh, is a Springs resident, has a business in Springs, but he went to work for ILE Police. Go.
There's still time. Whatever.
If, if I may just say, while you take your pictures, uh, and I told this to Andy at his graduation, never underestimate your ability to positively impact someone's life. Never underestimate it. It will help you in the long run.
And I don't think.
Remember those days for the rest of your career. And I wish you all, not just Andy, but all of you, great careers. I've done this now, starting my 43rd year. And if I had to do it all over again, I would change it. Thank you. Congratulations to all of you. God bless you. Keep it safe.
And I just wanted to add with, to what the chief said, that I don't think any profession is more there's any profession where you can, on a daily basis, impact, positively impact the lives of so many. You never know how many you're keeping safe just by your actions. So, um, thank you to all of you that serve in the police departments. We enjoy our quality of life because you're out there protecting us and serving us. Thank you very much. Okay, um, let's see. Under, I wanted to recognize, we're really thrilled tonight, we're very honored that we have our new school board member, Miami-Dade County School Board Member, Dan Espino, and he came by to visit. Uh, he just, uh, was, uh, had a swearing in ceremony last week, which was awesome. So, um, we're just thrilled that, I think this is the first time that Miami-Dade's school board has a Miami Springs resident.
Right.
As a member, so we're really honored, um, and thrilled about that. And plus that, uh, Dan is our former city council member. And, yes, and, uh, and also former city attorney. So he served and I was kidding him, um, I guess fire chief, I don't know what comes next. You've had so many hats, you know?
Good evening, everyone. Mayor and council, thank you so much for the opportunity. Before you, yeah, I, I think we'll call it a Miami Springs hat trick, and I'm proud to, to support that. No, but certainly, uh, I, I think I'm a lesson in tell God your plans and watch him laugh. And, and certainly, uh, I wouldn't have thought that, uh, that after sort of being out of government now for two years, and certainly, uh, being out of elected office for 10 years, that I would have this opportunity. But Governor DeSantis, uh, November 22nd.
Anything I can do to be of service, both with the school board and beyond, I'm happy to do it. I'm here at your service. So thank you all for the time to talk.
Danny, we know where you live.
Yes, you do. Guys, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
I think that's one of the amazing things about so many talented professionals that, um, we can tap into, um, that serve on all, you know, the state level, at the county level, at the school board level and stuff, and they're residents of Miami Springs. And I know I reach out to them all the time, you know, as I call it, time for input on, on stuff. So, um, you know, yeah, we're really, really blessed that, that, um, in our community, we just have a, uh, a wealth of talent, professional expertise, um, that loves our community and, and is willing to, um, help in any way that we ask. Thank you, Dan, so much.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, moving right along, um, the next presentation is for the Yard of the Month Award for December 2022. And do we have the Gonzalez family here? Hi, come on up. Hey, your property is at 701, let's all go, so we can take a, a photo with you. 701 Ren Avenue, and it was selected by our, uh, Parks Board, Advisory Board at the Yard of the Month. Thank you so much for beautifying Miami Springs and for, um, incentivizing other residents to, um, to, yeah, take the laws. Thank you. So if you want to tell us a little bit about your yard, and I encourage everyone, this month, if you have a chance, drive by 701 Ren Avenue and check out our Yard of the Month, okay? Um, can you tell us a little bit about your?
I am a busy, I'm employed right now, uh, my dad is the, the owner of the house. But he's worked for a natural, he's been coming in with the same, with the, the hours. So I come in, I didn't say thank you for the city of Miami Springs. And thank you for this very much, uh, recognize.
Thank you for beautifying our city.
Yes.
Okay, um, the next agenda item is open forum, and we have, um, Daniel Pinto signed up to speak.
Hello.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Um, that was a beautiful ceremony with the police officer. It made me smile a lot. Um, my name is Daniel Pinto. I'm with Troop 43 of the Boy Scouts of America. Um, I would like to start off saying I love your tie. Sorry?
It's, it's my friend.
And, uh, for those of you that don't know, um, the ranks of scouts, it starts off with scout, tenderfoot, second class, first class, star, life, and ultimately eagle. Uh, one of the ranks, the, the last rank, eagle scout, which is what I'm aiming to achieve for, you have to, uh, do a community service project, uh, which I had talked to Mr. Alonso, who was very nice. Um, you have to do a community service project in which reflects, uh, your morals, uh, but something that'll help out the community. Uh, I've printed out here some papers, but I've underestimated how many of you there were. Sorry about that. So I have five papers.
Yeah, you're all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good things.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Pardon my rendering skills, but on the, on the paper, you'll see a picnic table that I'm choosing, uh, with the council's permission, to build in Miami Springs. Now we'll have two chess sets incorporated in it. Uh, the chess sets will allow four people to play, and in between both chess sets, there's enough space for timers, um, for chess timers. Um, I, I chose to do this project because of my love for chess. I have a game over the previous year and a half, where I've, I started playing with my teacher. The plan was always to beat him, and once I beat him, it was always to beat the next teacher and the next teacher. And, uh, my love for chess is greater. I've been playing since pretty much my, a little before my birthday. My birthday's coming up. I'm 17. And then the reason I mention that is because you have to complete your eagle requirement before 18. Uh, my birthday's like three months away, so I'm in a bit of a time crunch. Um, so I came here really fast, um, hoping to get your guys' approval, uh, for building, um, my service project. And, uh, if you, and if I do want to get their approval to ask which park or where I could build it.
So Daniel, do you have a game plan for becoming a ground master?
Uh, not a master for now. But I, I do know a lot of ground masters, and I do watch a lot of their games.
Hats off to you, girl.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. This is something we'll look at, because, uh, open forum, um, it's not an agenda item, but thank you for the information. We'll consider it, and we'll, um, through our city manager, um, we'll reach out to you. Thanks so much. Thank you for serving our community and for being in the scouts. That's awesome. Okay, we don't, do we have anyone virtually signed up for open forum?
No.
Okay, then let's go to, um, approval of council minutes, um, approval of the minutes from the November 14th meeting.
For the chair, motion to move the item. So.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Councilman Best.
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman, go ahead.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Um, we go to reports from boards and commissions, so we're going to move the, um, item, uh, 7A to the end, and we'll start with the, um, item 7B, annual report from the chair of our Parks and Parks Way Board, Eric Ritchie. Hi, Eric. And this is the board that chooses the Yard of the Month every month, among a, a lot of other activities.
Yes, that was nice. Uh, good evening, Councilman Mayor. Um, I, I'm here. I, I'm not su, is it to, is it reiteration, or is it updating what we said we were going to do, or?
I think it's just a general.
Just a summary of.
Has done and what we'll do.
Because I, you know, I was here once before to tell you what we do and, and sort of why we do it. So here are a couple of things that are going on currently. The Yard of the Month continues. Uh, it's, I think it's been very successful, and this is the first time I've seen a presentation. And that's very, very nice. It was very kind of you all to be so gracious to the, the winner. Um, and these yards are very, very special. I mean, it's, it's difficult to pick sometimes because there's so many good ones. I think you all know that. Um, also, we have just completed a review of our Park and Parkway's procedures, how we're, you know, what, what we're supposed to be doing, how we're doing, going about doing it, getting information for any member who doesn't necessarily have it, you know, if they need something. Uh, but in one sense of, of reiteration, I want to say that we are still devoted, as we're supposed to be, as the protector of the tree canopy. That's the main focus of this, uh, board. And we have, you know, we've been successful in that, and we want to enhance it as all of you do too. And, um, in that vein, we submitted a plan, I think I presented to you, of for the 401 memorial area, that whole area. I was there with, uh, the city manager, uh, not too, too long ago, and we went over what was going to be done, and sure enough, it's already been done. The, uh, the Miami Springs sign that's there, which I know the mayor is very large on entryways to the Springs, rec, you know, getting people to see Miami Springs, Miami Springs when they come in. And I think that's, it's, I think it's great. I don't know how you feel about it, but I think it's really beautiful. I'd, I wanted to, the plan would be to put some palms on the sides of it, you know, to kind of frame it, and then maybe a hedge along the back. I don't know, because looking at it backwards, you know, when the letters are backwards, when you're leaving the Springs on Curtis, I don't know how you feel about that. I guess one way or another, it doesn't matter, but, um, I put, I was thinking of a hedge behind it to, again, set it apart from everything else that's there. So we've done that, uh, plan that, uh, Pam, um, uh, Carnary, it came up with. We presented it to our city manager, and we are just waiting for the funding. It's not really going to be that expensive because some of the plant, the, the majority of the plants we use are not high-end cost, you know? So it's very, very doable. Uh, and each member of the, uh, board visited the Reagan Park on the east side for recommendations for that. That's ongoing in, in our meetings. We'll be talking about that, uh, next time. And, um, other than that, it's just, you know, the major work is to hope that we're doing what we're supposed to do, we're doing what we said we would do. And of course, the Yard of the Month is, I don't think we've ever missed a month, so I think we're doing, other than pandemic, I, you know, I think we're doing very well. And so I'm pleased, I guess, to report that things are going well for the board of Park and Parklands.
Thank you, Eric. And how many years have you been serving on the board? It's been a long, long time.
God, 35.
Yeah, right.
Forty.
I think we need a recognition for Officer Ritchie.
That's, that's what's amazing about our, our community too. I mean, we have residents that give of their time, their service for years. It's not, you know, it's, it's a passion for them, and so thank you so much. I'm excited for the, the landscaping around the Miami Springs letters. Um, I think that will, but.
I think that'll be pretty, yeah.
And you know that any, um, anything that you need from us, please reach out to one of us on the council or to William. Um, however, you know, the council can help the, your board do a better, uh,
Yeah.
whatever you need, you know, um, work better. Um, if there, if there you have suggestions on, on things that, you know, that you would like to present to us, please, you know.
While we're still at your behest personally, we're still trying to figure out entryways here and there, you know? I mean, we've got one at west, we're the west end of Westward. We have a, a sign, a beautiful sign there as we do now on, on the, uh, area between, across from the driving range on Curtis. And there was some work done, I think, the week after I presented, William contacted me to let me know that the sign was back up for this, for the meetings, the council meetings on, whenever, whenever you meet. Um, but the entryways, we're still thinking strongly about that. I don't know what to do about East Drive. I think it's, it would be great if we could do something big there, but it, I don't know what it is, because it's, it doesn't, sides of the roads are too narrow and they're parked, cars parked there, and it's, it's really difficult.
You know, we're, uh, redoing the, for, the whole roadway on East Drive is going to be, um, redone soon for flood control, for flood, um, stormwater improvements and flood control. We've got, um, I think it's a $5 million.
It's, it's a.
Actually, six million.
Six million dollar project that will probably start.
Drive, uh, we're doing a traffic circle on Oakwood and East Drive.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's right off of 36th Street. That will be a good spot.
So maybe, uh, Eric could work with our engineer though, that engineering group that is designing all that, and they might have some ideas too on, that'd be a good opportunity to throw that in as part of that project. I mean, the signs can't be, you know, with the, the cost would be nominal.
I'm so glad we got the, the Miami Springs sign in before the dedication of 401, I, which I think is soon, this month.
29th, 29th, I think.
Yes. Good, well.
Okay, thank you, Eric. And by the way, if everyone knows the, um, ribbon cutting for the Miami Springs sign, is this, is it Friday?
December 16th at 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM with the Miami Realtors Association, who are the ones that, uh, provided the funding for the sign. They wanted to, um, have the, the ribbon cutting. They, they wanted to have it before the end of the year, and even though the landscaping won't be ready, um, it was because of the grant money that, you know, they wanted to close it out. So we'll still wait for the landscaping down the road, but the ribbon cutting will be this Friday, so everyone's invited for that.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone on the board that serves with you. Okay, um, the next report is from Chair Ernie Aloma on the Board of Adjustment.
Hi.
Hi.
Mayor, I'm telling you. Um, as I did last year, I gave a brief, uh, overall of what, overview of what we do. I'm not going to repeat myself because obviously you guys remember. So I could tell you, it's been an uneventful year. Our board continues to hear cases, obviously, whether it be on the planning or zoning side, or whether it be on a, a Board of Adjustment. It's been a very low-key. Um, you know, I appreciate the support that you have given us as far as, you know, voting on, sort of along the lines of where we vote. I have to stress again that we have a very qualified board. Uh, you know, I think this is one of the best boards as far as, you know, having the qualifications of people who serve on it. So I'm very happy with that, and we work very well together, and I think, uh, you know, the work will continue, but really nothing new to report, other than we're moving. really nothing new to report other than we're moving ahead on cruise control, which is the way we like it. So our meetings are very efficient. And, you know, that's all I have. I mean, I'm, I'm more than willing to answer any questions that you guys have with us. But other than that, there's not much to report.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I might say, Ernie, thank you for serving in that capacity. And I know you've been sheriff.
The board as long as the previous gentleman, but.
No, naturally not, sir. But, no, but, but again, thank you for serving as the chair for that board. And you, you do chair that board of, of, of many people that are certainly well qualified, as you mentioned.
Very well qualified, yes.
And you're the premier board in the city, as most of us are aware up here. So thank you for doing what you do, sir.
Thank you. And, and, and your, your board is a great example of the professional expertise that we have in our community that we're able to tap into.
Yeah, you mentioned that, you know, the qualifications of the people in Miami Springs. I mean, we might be small, but we're powerful, so.
Very.
You know. So have a good night and.
Thank you so much. And thank your board members again.
Hope is that we do this every year.
Yes, just, you know, so that we know within the year, you know, any, and particularly that we have a chance to see each other and to thank you for the service, to thank you and the board members.
Merry Christmas, Ernie.
Thank you. Okay. And then we have the report from Jim Watson from the Historic Preservation Board. Hi, Jim.
I might be a little more worried. I apologize. I guess everybody's being brief, but.
Good evening. Good evening. I just wanted, I had to start off by thanking the City Clerk's Office, specifically Sandra Duarte. She's an excellent resource for us. I mean, she pulls it together. I also need to recognize the board members. I think it's important too for whom are.
Did you speak into? I'm gonna make sure that.
Slide it over here. Must recognize the board members, Yvonne Schornberger, Ken Wild, Carol Foster, and Vivian Ela Ray. And I, as previous was said about other boards, we have a strong one too, I think, in fact, of the group. We're well suited for the charge. Two of our members are board members of the Historical Society. One of Yvonne and Ken. Ken is also a member of the Curtis Mansion Board. Both Carol and Vivian had worked in the past and are currently working possibly too with the city. So I think we have a nice fit there. And to also recognize our liaison, Mr. Best, in terms of the connection with the larger group. Where we only meet probably about five, six times a year, but I think that we're getting a lot done, hopefully. One of the major topics that we've had recently at our meetings, which comes up is kind of thematically is basically preservation or promotion of preservation. I think the last time I had before you, I kind of introduced a little bit of that piece. Because I think what that does, it guides a lot of what we do. And if you look at our charge, one of our charges is education. So I think that fits well. And and also only because preservation itself, the activities of preservation can act as strong community tourism and business drivers. So and the more that we can enhance that, the better. Some of the things in terms of promotion we're doing, we branched out. Hopefully you've seen Ken Wild's history notes and the electronic emailings from the city. So that's a component of promoting the city. His most recent one was about the FEC yards and the building from nineteen twenty-five and Melrose, a two-story building that used to be a dormitory or a residence for FEC rail workers. We've also, and this has been, it came up during the budget time, we reached out to align with other preservation organizations in this, in the area. Most notably is our recent request to y'all about the Florida Historical Markers Program. And thank you very much. I under, from what I understand, sometimes communication is a little foggy, but I understand that's moving forward. So thank you. And also recognize on that, the last time I spoke, there was a concern like, well, we need to look at other sites. We're looking at other sites. So we hear, any response we get from you, we hear. Also, a project we're working on is we have a draft. It's actually a, a dress. It's functioning, but it's not open. A draft information website guide to preservation issues from Miami Springs. And what that's in response to is so that we, if we get questions from whether it's people interested in designated their building, they want to know what's appropriate, what's information about preservation, it's a site to go to. Instead of having a book, we figured a website would be more appropriate. The topics at the point, and it's, we're about halfway through it. Hopefully you'll see it soon. I guess you'll need to approve it. Give you a feedback soon. But topics include like, why preservation? What style is my house? How am I able to apply for a certificate of appropriateness? Renovation, renovation recommendations. And those two topics are actually in our ordinances. So it's a way of bringing the information and make, bring it to life to a degree. Federal preservation guidelines, Miami Springs nineteen twenty to nineteen thirty. Frequently asked questions and need help. So we just don't state all this. We try to connect somewhat body, you know, any questions or interest with other resources. And the guide provide like a reference within the city for preservation resources. So, and we look forward to your feedback once we give you something to look at. I mentioned in that Miami Springs nineteen twenty, nineteen thirty, the board has been looking at one through one of the members, it's kind of bubbled up, but we've currently done a survey to establish what the current structures are that were constructed between nineteen twenty and nineteen thirty. That's the Country Club Estates period. We actually, that was a successful outreach by Ms. Duarte and the Dade County Property Appraisers Office. So we've identified currently standing buildings that's within that range. That will help us as a guide as we move forward with other actions and may open opportunities. We are currently working, excuse me, I think my eyes are clogging up. Oh, and I and tailing off of what Eric was talking about, we're currently working, have been working on the request from you guys about recommendations for possible entrance signs in terms of, I believe, that's been split between both parks and ourselves. I think we fall on the idea of what should it look like? Eric's groups looking like, where should they be? So we've come up with at least eight mockups that we think are viable. The next step is we're meeting with parks because you can't do design without having a location. So that'll be, we're looking, we were actually going to meet tomorrow, but something came up. So, but then I think January, we've got a meeting scheduled, a joint meeting to work on that and bring that back to you guys too. So. And finally, oh, what we normally do in terms of reviewing certificates of appropriateness, we've had two. And that's out of, and, and for, put that in context. We have thirteen buildings in Miami Springs that are designated historical structures. There's also sites, but in terms of structures, which need to come to us for a certificate of appropriateness. There's twelve, actually. One has been actually, one was demolished since it was designated. So just an update on that. Recently, we've had two requests. And, and that's been interesting because I think we have some really energized gung ho builders out there because the request came to us after one of, both of them have been under construction and one of them virtually is finished. So, but we've worked with, with them and they have completed changes, are, are in the process of making changes that we've requested. And we're also working closely with the building department and code enforcement in terms of how to continue the process. That's my little update. Anything I can address, sir?
Kenny, thanks. And, 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 and to the mayor. I mean, how many times, guys, colleagues, have we seen these boards being brought up here week after week after week at, at meetings? And that's Maria Mitchell. That's caused this to happen. We never used to do that before, ever.
Well, we appreciate it. Share with what you, we are working. We're out there working, so.
We appreciate, like we always say, you know, we're historical city, a very rich historical city that the historical preservation, it's the Historical Society is you're our historians. We don't have a historian on board. We don't have, you know, a salary to storying on board and the members, how many members do you have?
I'm not up to date with that.
But it's vast and, and and they all carry, I mean, stories, knowledge, deep knowledge and of, of Miami Springs history. And now we have the museum where it's a place to shelter it because I know years and years ago it was like people were keeping it in their garages. And now we have, you know.
Well, I think it makes a nice triangle.
Air-conditioned area to protect it, to store it, and then the museum to.
I think it makes a nice triangle in terms of the city's preservation board. Curtis Mansion and also Historical Society. So I think it reinforces the value of preservation and, and the community.
And particularly now that we're gearing up to celebrate our hundredth.
What I was going to say and.
Centennial celebration in twenty twenty-six, the, the knowledge, the wealth of knowledge, but also the passion for the history of our city. And with Ken Wild, and I know the you may not know the figure, but I remember Ken saying it recently. Because he's on the website, on the Historical Society website, you're putting information about all of Miami Dade County. It's not just, and the followers have increased, like you have thousands of followers now where it used to be hundreds.
Like we always, your jaw kind of drops. It's like, wow.
It's really is because they really have expanded the history. I mean, how can you talk about Miami Springs history without talking about, you know, the history of the other communities in Dade County and all? And he's done.
Mango issue going on.
Yes.
It's always something new.
Something new, but so thank you so much and thank the, the board members.
Thank you.
Thank you. For all of us, for residents. Okay, so now we have the report from the Business and Economic Development Task Force. And we have our esteemed Chair, Mark Trobridge, and Vice Chair, Maria Carillo. And member George Santin. And Charlie Leonard, come on.
So excited for.
I know. Good evening, everybody. My job is to serve as the Chair of the Business and Economic Development Task Force. And I want to recognize, as you just heard the mayor say, a few of our members who are we began the work in September of twenty twenty-one. Eleven original members, two pointed by each member of the council, and of course, three by our esteemed mayor. I certainly want to thank each of the members of the council on behalf of our board, as well as the city manager and his team. And I'll also give a great thank you to our City Clerk, Representative Sandra Duarte, for working so closely with us. I'm sure all these guys are standing so far away. I would ask you for your thoughtful consideration, which of the point we're submitting to you this evening, which I'm sure you had before you. But I certainly want to recognize our Vice Chair, Maria Carillo, board members, Andrea McGrimm, board member Jennifer Graham, Patrick McChay, Charlie, who's here also tonight. Francisco Fernandez, board member George Santin, who was also with us here tonight. Former members Max Marlin, Captain Newhart, Sean. Some task is something essential, not only because of the effort and work that you all put into forming this task force. But because it was time to take action. And so we continue today with some recommendations. And I very hopeful that you'll look at those and as appropriate, figure out the priorities and implementation. And if you'd like to have us back, we'd be glad to continue that effort. The folks who came and testified, we had public input in each one of our meetings, whether they were business owners, members of the Chamber of Commerce, residents or ever interested folks. We did enjoy that. We had great leadership input from each and every one of you at various meetings throughout the last fifteen months. One of the first things that we thought was important was the depurist survey. We did that. This summer, we had the results of that in your package and in the recommendations today. We had four hundred and twenty responses to that. Some of the highlights, which, you know, I'll just give you is that most of the respondents have lived in our community for more than a decade. I know that does not surprise anyone here. Many of their respondents were not business owners, but were very interested, invested in what was happening with our business community. The greatest use of businesses that they were frequenting, of course, were restaurants, shopping and entertainment. Things that you'll hear about, which are probably, again, most surprise improvements, looking at our parking downtown, looking at our building facades. I'd like to see a greater use and expansion in the central business district for restaurants and retail. We heard that pharmacy again and again, whether that was in the CBD or along the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street quarter. Other ideas that folks were interested in is for the idea of paying for parking was a resounding, no, thank you. A statue to our founder, a resounding, yes, please. Folks felt that our signage was pretty strong, but again, they're interested in seeing our restaurant community grow as well. And what people like most about living in our community, whether they own a business or live here or there, going safe, enjoying, of course, the green space, the small town feel. I recommendations, we gave you kind of our top five and many more that are included in the package, which we would encourage you all to look at as well and determine the best way to move forward. But kind of our top two, one and one A. We're looking at Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street improvements, specifically related to the code. And I know that this past year, this council put resources toward updating our code. We started with our signage. And I know that we have to do it little by little because it is a costly process. But we're hoping that maybe the next priority will be to look at what is happening on Thirty-Sixth Street. There are quite a few restrictions there which have maybe stunted the ability to recruit and grow. We're all in the status of understanding what economic recovery is, but we're really in a great position to grow out of that recovery. One of the courses is the continued pursuit of annexation. We see that as an essential element to allowing us to experience that growth in a way that is very positive and means what you see, what many of the residents and business owners have said in the survey. Increasing the parking in your central business district. There's also a program that we are looking to join and be a part of called Main Street America. I think we're going to show a very quick clip of what that program is. And then I'm going to ask George to come up and say a couple of words about that. I will come back to that in a moment. A working request that was brought up by former member Marlin and member Graham, talked a lot about events that draw visitors, residents and neighbors to come downtown and experience and what is that tremendous charm. So I'm certainly going to allow any of our other members to go there and share a few words, make sure I haven't missed anything. And we're going to try to get that clip out of Sanders' email. Charlie? Waving in support. I love it.
Come on, Charlie. I know you have something to say.
Of course she does.
But we have a great group. And I will tell you, when you ask a group to come together and spend a year, in this case, about fifteen months, listening to the input and sharing our own unique experiences. We had business owners, we had, of course, residents, we had non-residents who helped us kind of put our arms around many of the recommendations that you hear today. Some were quick fixes and we didn't make the top five, but you know, we do a better job making sure that, you know, our dumpsters aren't just open and in the Florida heat. And how could that affect, you know, the walkability of downtown and things like that? That was one of Max's deals. The rest and Captain, the lockstep about making the city smell even better. But it certainly is in those recommendations. So but we submit this to offer your consideration again. I think any of us will be available to come back. If you want to talk a little bit further, but we're very blessed in this community to have very dedicated folks, but most of us haven't served on anything. Thirty-five years, but the last fifteen months have been a great labor of lives. But thank you for the trust and faith that you have placed in us.
Thanks for doing a great job chairing that, man. You
Thank you.
I know some of us have been to several meetings. And you run a good meeting, sir.
Thank you, Councilman.
And, and we greatly, all of us appreciate the work of, I know it's been very difficult sometimes because it was a larger group is getting even the group to be available for the dates and times. So sometimes having the quorum and, you know, and switching the dates around and I guess but somehow you made it happen. Meetings every month.
I want to thank you, Ken, on behalf of our entire board, your, you know, great faith and dedication to this process, but also having great faith in having us be part of the process, so.
And now our job will be to, to read through the report individually and then possibly even have a workshop where we discuss it and we'd like you to be back when we have the workshop. You know, and, and I think I mentioned this at one of the meetings because I, I went to every meeting except one that I was flying while you were having the meetings. The other was, I was either there.
It was right over July. We were going to spend some time with family over July.
But I, that a lot of your recommendations, some of them we can do right away or we've already done. I know there's several that, you know, we've already started the process on. Others may take longer. And, and there may be some that for some. And and there may be some that for some reason or another, because of a combination of other factors that affect it. Um, aren't possible or aren't possible, you know, immediately. But um, please know that. We greatly value every single recommendation that you've made here and um, we will look at them.
George, if you want to send anything, we're looking for that. Clip, which we can certainly send to everybody.
Let's see. I think it's here now.
Okay.
So why don't we just while? Is this going to take very long? Because I was thinking I'd like to take a photo of all of us with the board so we could do that now.
I mean, we're not the yard of the month, but come on.
The yard of the month. Come on now.
From all of us, thank the other for.
For sure.
Yeah. Thank you and thank all of the board members that couldn't be here that have worked so. It's on YouTube. So much on on the report, on the process.
How did it end up down there?
Oh, yeah.
This is a a quick video, and if you're not familiar with the program. Uh, we're actually taking this right from their uh. Website. We've already begun to explore the ability for the city to be part of this program. Uh, and take advantage of those resources, which after the video, George will talk about.
George, did you want to talk about the video while we're waiting for it to start?
Well, this organization that uh Mark alluded to, of course, is the uh Main Street America. It's a network of uh. A lot of leaders in the small towns all over this United States. That have done. Projects to revitalize their communities and make sure they're vital. And their uh business activity is. Uh, affluent and um. So we're going to, am I putting it now or am I going to wait till? Okay. I'll finish after.
About our communities.
Nations gathering places, places of shared memory, celebration and economic activity. Today's main streets are reliant through hard work, planning, commitment and action by local volunteers and leaders. Main streets across America are thriving. Main Street America is a nationwide movement with a proven track record of revitalizing older and historic downtowns and neighborhood commercial districts. The Main Street America Network brings together thousands of passionate local leaders who contribute their time and ideas to building more vibrant and sustainable communities. Today, people are seeking out communities with character and places where they feel connected. Main Street America downtowns and districts are places to raise families, start new businesses, build community and forge the future.
So this organization. Has the net is a network and has the resources, we feel. That can help uh with the professional development. Uh, training programs for the city staff. Uh, and um, so we feel that this is important. That that one of our recommendations is that we join. Uh, this network. And um. And also, as one of our recommendations is that we consider hiring a Director of Economic Development. That leads and oversees the economic development programs in the city. Ultimately, the director's goal is to improve and stabilize. The local economy and ensure that all economic development programs are developed and implemented properly. Although things are starting to look promising out there, obviously with a lot of new businesses and many of us just recently went to the Sushi Saki that everybody loved. Uh, you know, most of these businesses within the first five years, fifty percent. Fail. So I think it's a commitment that we have to as a city. As city leaders. To do everything we can to assure that we do our part to help them continue to be successful for longer than that. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you again. Um, I know um, it's been long fifteen months. I was going to ask um, the Business and Economic Development Task Force members. To stay um, because I think our next presentation fits right in with um. You know, with what you've been discussing and with your um. Uh, recommendations. We have the pleasure of of having um. A guest tonight that is going to do a presentation on um. Marketing cities, on how we market cities. And uh, his name is Ken Crasnow. And um, I happened to meet him at a League of Cities Conference. This summer in or um, I guess Hollywood.
Hollywood.
And then again, recently in Orlando um, earlier this month when I was at a League of Cities and um, you know, we've been talking about um, his company. Market Cities. And I said, you know, this would be a great um. Uh, opportunity for right after the presentation from the Business and Economic Development Task Force for us to just get a general idea on what it means to market a city. Um, so um, Ken graciously agreed to be here. And give us an example.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Council, uh, proud to be here again. My name is uh Ken Crasnow. I'm a Vice Chairman of Colliers. Um, Colliers is a global commercial real estate firm, and I'm sure, you know, you've heard of uh, you know, CBRE, Colliers, et cetera. Um, but specifically, we uh have a practice group. Um, that, as you can see on this map, works specifically and exclusively with municipalities, very. Appropriate to the video that you just showed with regards to a lot of the, you know, small cities that are experiencing, you know, tremendous growth throughout, you know, the state of Florida. Um, and it's really, how do we tell their story? Every city is unique. Every, I mean, I've heard. The the character comes through loud and clear uh, tonight. You know, it's my first meeting here, but it's very clear. You know, the sense of community and the the pride that people have. But so that story, that um, aspect of what makes Miami Springs so special. The rest of the world needs to uh hear it, see it, feel it, et cetera. Very, again, similar to the work that uh. Uh, Mark and that that group, you know, have done. So. Um. What is important, though, is uh, the the evidence is that you're speaking to, whether it's new residents that are moving here or new businesses that are moving here. Or new investors that are looking to invest capital here. Um, very specifically, they're looking for very relevant. timely data. Uh, people are driven very specifically by data. So facts matter. Um, but it's also got to be, as you saw in that video, very kind of visually appealing as well. So it's a combination of 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 those two factors. Um, and again, you have to know your audience. That's really the important. Aspect. Are you trying to attract, as I heard to tonight, retailers? You want more retailers? You want more residents? You've got to craft your your message um, to the type of uh people and businesses that you're trying to uh attract. So I'm just going to run through very quickly just a few uh examples. So we work for the city of Fort Lauderdale. Um, again, the perception of a of a beach town and spring break and so on and so forth. The the DDA has a very specific message about working uh and growing businesses in the core urban downtown environment. So it starts with really defining what that is. A lot of people don't know that Fort Lauderdale has such a, you know, a dynamic urban core. And again, it it is relevant in terms of. Accessibility. So they are very specifically targeting businesses that are thinking. New York, California, you've read the stories and all these companies that are moving to Florida. They want to specifically attract those kind of businesses into uh the downtown urban core. Why would a business want to be in the downtown urban core when you see a a talent base that's growing? And again. Backed up by facts and figures, you see a uh, an affluent, growing, younger uh demographic. So again, all of these. And this is part of a, you know, forty page report that we that we do. But again, very specifically targeted towards attracting businesses that are. Didn't know that Fort Lauderdale has such a dynamic and growing uh talent base within that uh, within that urban core. Is that just one example? And this is not another example, but uh. Uh, not. Seeing. It's kind of frozen. There's more, trust me. Well. Looking for. Anyway, um. There are a number of examples that 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 we brought here today to just give you an idea of. Uh, it's really sort of running a parallel track to some of the work that your uh advisory boards are doing. But also the work that your staff is going to be doing in an economic development capacity, whether it's regarding, you know, zoning or density or or uh. All of the aspects that go into, you know, a cohesive economic development, you know, program. One of the aspects that I was uh, that I was mentioning to uh the mayor. A lot of the cities that we are working for. Want to obviously retain that charm of why the people moved, let's say, to Oakland Park. Um, so it 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 is, you know, a lot of people think growth and development is sort of counter uh intuitive to, you know, retaining that charm and that uh feeling. Of what it means to be a resident of Oakland Park or resident of of Miami Springs. Um, but I think when you explain and you show um, you know, why people, again, this was part of the report that we do for Oakland Park. Why people are choosing to move to Oakland Park, you really bring out. The culture, the community, the the small town feel. You you highlight some of the attributes that make Miami Springs uh supposed so special. But in the same vein, you can also talk about a reimagined downtown and a lot of the new uh innovative projects. I was at the groundbreaking today. Uh, for this, for the, for this project, which is on the old uh City Hall where they're going to be uh. Building a new mixed-use project. Um, they're creating a a uh, a roof. You know, it's a term you'll probably hear about now, but it's a, it's kind of a living, breathing street. It's a street that can be closed down at various times for artworks and. Uh, other types of uh retail events, but it's also uh actually a a public street. So I begin visually very appealing. Um, Wilton Manners, again, another city that uh a lot of people have kind of overlooked over the years. Um, their perspective about, again, community, culture, diversity, uh inclusiveness is are some of the key themes. That are, you know, that really jump out in our report. But what is also, and a lot of people don't pay attention to, is the amount of growth that is taking place. And yet still maintaining those attributes of small town community feelings. So when people see and you highlight and you 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 specifically talk about the number of new residents, the number of new businesses, the number of new restaurants. That are moving into the area in addition to. Uh, a bunch of mixed-use projects, people say, hmm, it's a place that I'd like to uh move or or relocate my business to. Um, one other one is a city up in uh St. Lucie County. Again, this was, uh, I heard uh Mark talk about, you know, various community charrettes. This is a city um on the water in St. Lucie County, again, kind of overlooked, but we brought out some of the attributes that we got out of. Community charrettes about, you know, a destination waterfront and really sort of taking advantage of the attributes that uh, that a Fort Pierce has to offer. And then lastly, uh, Tamarack, which is a city in Broward County that a lot of people from, you know, for for decades have thought of as just a retirement. Uh, community and uh, you know, nice, safe, but very kind of, you know, uh bedroom, uh sleepy kind of community. But they're embarking on a a new kind of town center village. Um, and again, the report talks about the uh, the the changing demographic and we're we're again visually kind of showing a new kind of Tamarack resident and people that might not have. Uh, been thinking about over the last, you know, twenty or thirty years. Um, and again, this is just sort of a a visual representation of telling the story of what makes each of these communities so unique and so special. Um, and it's kind of uh, you know, it it piggybacks what you're doing in this uh, you know, economic development arena. So that's just some. Broad examples uh that I wanted to uh, but. It it's important, I think, that what the takeaway is, is that. All of the great things that makes Miami Springs so special and the reason that people are on boards for thirty-five years or everybody's lives here for, you know, for decades. Shouldn't be a hidden secret. People that people need to need to know it. Um, and uh, again, you read the the stories every day in the paper about the businesses and the residents. Uh, that are fleeing, you know, the Northeast and the Midwest and and the West Coast and. Uh, there's a, there's an opportunity to uh retain the charm, retain the the culture, retain the the identity of a Miami Springs and yet still attract. Uh, some of the businesses, the retailers, the restaurants uh that that. I I'm I'm hearing that people are are looking for. So with that, thank you, Mayor, for inviting me. I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Ken. I think um, this really dovetails so perfectly with, and when we were talking at the Florida League of City Conference and he was telling. You know, and and you were mentioning that 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 very often now when people are looking to relocate their businesses, they want a city with history. With the charm and all this, not just a location and and we fit that so much. So it's just knowing how. To market ourselves, how to tell our story and to tell our story in a new way. Um, because a lot of people have um, even within our community, but outside of our community, a preconceived notion. Of Miami Springs and um, and part of it is, you know, that it's a beautiful tree. Canopied area with, you know, um, a very historic. Uh, areas, but you know, we also have so many new opportunities and so many great restaurants and shops and businesses and outdoor places. And I'm not sure that 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 message gets out. Um. So uh, marketing our city, I think, is something that is right in line with what the Business and Economic Development uh Task Force is is um. Recommending overall.
Do the chair. And I think um. Ken. Based on what I saw too, I see that people do want a sense of community, right? And together with that, it entails loyal customers. And I think with that, it allows a business to be successful. Because we can live off of our own city. I mean, these these businesses here can literally live off of our city and be successful. So. I'm really looking forward to. Putting this puzzle together and seeing Miami Springs' potential with its characteristics, because we just have so much to offer. And I agree with you, we should share. A lot of people are like, no, we want to hush secret, but you know what? If we die out, something else will take it over. And we don't want to let that happen. So thank you for for your presentation.
Thank you.
You, sir.
And uh.
Thanks for bringing them.
Yes, I I and and again, thank you for the Business and Economic Development Task Force for. Task Force for kind of setting the groundwork of, you know, all the areas that we need to look at, um, and, um, and we'll continue this work. Um, I think the, the next step would be, um, down the road is for us to consider whether, you know, we want to go that, you know, obviously this is just a presentation, we'll have to have it for discussion, but, um, and then how would that work, William? We would, um, put out an RFP for marketing or?
We'll do a RFP. We will piggyback, uh, off an existing RFP. Gossaway would, uh, work at council, uh, wants to go in that direction.
All right. Piggyback's an easy way to
Through the chair.
Go in quickly.
And
I heard, I heard somebody say, take action, so.
And I think one of the other things that, um, really, um, interested me when, when Ken and I were talking about this is you said that very often your clients are smaller cities. The ones that, you know, it's not like Miami Beach, you know.
All cables, you know, there's, there's cities that have got, you know. But, but it's not, it's not.
I know.
Um, but yeah, we are effectively a, uh, we become a kind of a virtual resource. If you do, in fact, hire our, our clients are primarily, you know, city manager, economic development director, and then we're kind of a, you know, uh, an add-on, you know, virtual resource to put out specific reports. If there's a specific, specific initiative that you're, you know, that you're championing, whether it's on zoning or density or the sods or anything, you know, we can sort of marshal resources, you know, appropriately to leverage, you know, William's team.
I think at the, at the same time, the most important part right now is what Mark, uh, talked about is changing the code.
Yeah.
To be able to attract those businesses that we want to know first thirty-sixth street and the Abraham Track.
Yep.
All right.
Chair, Mr. Cross, now, who, who would do it? That was very, very well covered early in your presentation. Um, could you see to what that I get a compliment? I'd like you to read, I'd like to read it in its entirety.
Which?
The one you mentioned earlier when you're from, from Collier, in the
Oh, yeah, sure, sure. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, let's see, the next agenda item is, are we through with reports? Yes. Public hearings, we have none. We have consent agenda. Uh, two items on the consent agenda. Is there, um, an item that anyone wishes to pull out to discuss separately?
Pardon me?
No one for open forum.
We did have open forum. We had the Cub Scout, the Scout. Um, okay, for the consent agenda, does anyone have, um, want to pull one of the items out for discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion, I don't know, nine, oh, nine, good, man.
All right, any discussion? Call the vote, please. Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Behat?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to old business. Um, we'll go to eleven B.
This is a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, adopting workforce housing legislative finding, findings pursuant to Miami-Dade County Code, Section thirty-three dash one-nine-three-point-seven, providing for transmittal and providing for an effective date. Um, and basically in July, we received a, a letter from the county. Um, most of the municipalities, uh, received the same letter asking us to, uh, provide them with a resolution of, uh, what the city is doing or has done as far as, uh, workforce housing. Um, and that was back in July, so they've been every month, I keep sending an email asking for a follow-up on it. And I know Heidi's been working on that with other municipalities and
So what I'll add to that is the county adopted an ordinance related to workforce housing in twenty sixteen. And among the things that they requested municipalities to do was, and I'm paraphrasing, but they effectively asked cities, if you're going to adopt workforce housing ordinances, we'd like them to meet these minimum standards. And if you're already addressing workforce housing or you have some other reason that you might not be able to comply, some cities, for example, had, uh, were exempt from complying with the county's ordinance because they fell under a certain threshold in their population. Miami Springs does not fall under that threshold of ten thousand. So some cities such as Pinecrest, Cutler Bay, Aventura, et cetera, um, adopted resolutions that effectively provided and, and met the requirements of the ordinance that's for the, the resolutions provided that the workforce housing needs in those cities was being adequately addressed. And that was something that the county requested through that ordinance for, well, mandated for cities to do. So all this resolution does is it looks at the state of your city, what you currently have and what you have in your comprehensive plan. And the finding is that you are currently adequately addressing workforce housing. Um, I do want to dispel, um, I know that there's confusion over workforce housing and with all of the discussions that are happening in the news right now about the affordable housing crisis, et cetera. I want to make sure that everybody understands that workforce housing is not necessarily the same as affordable housing or low income housing. That's not what it means. So workforce housing is housing for families whose income levels are within sixty to a hundred and forty percent of the county's area media inc- median income, which, to put it in perspective, for a family of four, means between fifty-eight thousand five hundred to a hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred, and that's based on this year's numbers. Um, so the type of people who might fall within that range are police, teachers, firefighters, assistants, uh, assistant, uh, state attorneys, public defenders, nurses. So you're not changing anything in your code by adopting this resolution. You're not changing anything that the city is doing. You are just advising the county pursuant to the county ordinance that you are adequately addressing the need for workforce housing in the city.
Yes, sir.
I threw the chair. Uh, Heidi, thanks for that explanation because you just answered a question I was going to ask you. You have the answer. Through the chair, motion, we're going.
Through the chair. Um, yes, I'd like to discuss the item. Um, okay, is there a second? Okay, let's do discussion now.
Fine. I just wanted to clarify on the workforce housing. What is the city actively doing right now to adjust this resolution? Cause I mean, we're putting a resolution together, but I don't know if we're
If you look at the attachments to the resolution, it references the, uh, your, your city's comprehensive plan, which we recently updated for other purposes, um, to come into compliance with state law in a few different areas. Um, but your comprehensive plan addresses how the city is going to address the workforce housing needs and affordable housing needs. And then that's implemented through your zoning code.
This comprehensive plan that it's addressing and the resolution is what was already in place and it's, this one's
It's been in place for over a decade.
Yes, right. So this doesn't limit us from updating our comprehensive plan down the road. All it is, is providing the county. Um, the county mayor had a meeting this, I think it was a summer at a, a summit with all the city mayors, um, you know, talking about workforce housing and all this. And this was one of the requirements that they were asking. She was, um, you know, asking each city to say what they're doing about it. And basically what many cities, like you said, they're providing the information they already have. It's not reinventing the wheel. It's saying this is, um, and this has been in our comprehensive plan. Um, that was updated in twenty twelve. So, but again, down the road, there are things in our comprehensive plan that we need to tweak, that we need to just, you know, like we do with everything, because we're an older city and we can still do that.
So this is mandatory?
Yes.
Okay. And I mean, it's not to say, I, I want to make it clear and I, I don't think that that's the intent, but there are cities that did adopt workforce housing ordinances like the city of Miami, North Bay Village and others that have done incentive programs with developers, but I think that in Miami Springs, the, the, I haven't heard that type of, of desire. So we're not proposing an ordinance for workforce housing, but rather saying we find as a city that we are meeting, uh, we are adequately meeting the needs.
So the county is requesting for us to create a resolution in conclusion to our comprehensive plan? We can't just use a comprehensive plan and act upon the comprehensive plan?
We're basically, we are providing them with a resolution that says we're adequately addressing these needs. Here's our comp, here is how we're doing it. And how we're doing it is we have a comprehensive plan that says X, Y, and Z. That comprehensive plan is implemented through our zoning code, which then gets um, implemented further once you have development projects come in. So we're, we're basically giving information to the, the, to the county as to how the city is doing its operations.
So the plan is not enough for them?
No, we're saying here is the plan.
Right. The resolution.
I think through the resolution, correct me if I'm wrong, the resolution is handing them the plan. It's a resolution saying this is our
Well, no, this is specific to, um, workforce housing, not the actual comprehensive plan.
It's only an excerpt. We're not giving them the entire plan. We're giving them an excerpt with the provisions that are
That address, that address the counties.
Right, right.
Through the chair, maybe I think you got a first and a second.
Any more discussion? Call the vote, please. Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo? No. Councilman Behat?
Yes.
And Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay.
Um, next agenda item is another resolution. This is certainly good news.
This is a resolution of the mayor and the city, uh, council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, accepting a state appropriation grant in the amount of two million dollars, approving a standard grant agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection relating to the, uh, Miami Springs South Drive Road and Stormwater Improvements Project, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve? Okay. Any discussion? I just want to say, I really, um, you know, want to thank, um, first our administration, city administration and our grant writer for applying for the grant and then Governor DeSantis and, um, our state, uh, congressman, uh, Senator Brian Avila and, uh, Representative Alex Rizzo for working hard.
This isn't the two million that we got.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought
No, no, this is a lobbyist and, uh, and Brian Ambulac out of last year, the, remember the Hook Square Project and the South Drive?
Is this C, eleven C?
Eleven C.
Oh.
This is for South Drive.
I thought this was one from Governor DeSantis.
That's, that's, I could understand.
Coming up in the future and that will be
Even Oakland, okay, well, more so Oakland.
This is the one for our lobbyist. So this is to thank our lobbyist and our state representative, um, uh, at that time, state representative, former, um, state representative and now our senator, um, uh, Brian Avila and, um, Alex Rizzo, um, who although he's representing, representing us recently, um, has been at the state and, you know, has supported all the projects for Miami Springs. So we're re- really, really grateful for this. So this is for, um,
South Drive.
South Drive. So now we have work doing infrastructure, stormwater improvements at, um,
We're, we're going to have a busy twenty-twenty-three. We're going to be
Drive.
South, on the South River, which is going to be in, we're going to be on Oakwood and East Drive. We're going to be on South Drive. We're going to have the golf course going through renovations and then we're going to have to hook square pump uh, over by the
On the outgoing bridge.
Massive improvements for, uh, flood control, stormwater improvement, roadway improvements, long, long, long overdue. It's wonderful. Um, okay, uh, let's, um, yes, I do. But William, I wanted to ask you, um, with this also to update, which project is starting the soonest? Because I know I hear
South Water.
And then after that, we'll do East Drive. And then South will be
South Drive.
Well, before that one would probably be the pump station.
Yeah.
And then South Drive will be last.
Okay.
But they're all going to start.
Kind, next year. They should be starting next year. Okay. We'll have to worry about detours and but it'll be all right. It'll all be for a good purpose.
We know, we know how to get around this town.
Call the vote, please. Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Behat?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you. Um, eleven B?
This is, this is a resolution of the Miami City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, expressing the city's intent to provide property tax relief by reducing its millage to a rate of between two point five and three point zero mills upon approval of the city's annexation application, providing for transmittal and providing for an effective date.
Um, I, I, I'd like to make a motion that we do this, uh, but for discussion, I would like to say, well, this is an absolutely absolute genius thing to be on, 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 on our agenda tonight. Uh, going forward to show the county commission how adamant we were behind this. And, and, and look at the numbers through even less than what we had originally forecast. Remember, three point five to three point seven? Now we're, now we're down to this. So this should all lay a lot of concerns among other commissioners that have gone against us on, on an annexation vote. So this is, this is, we motion moved.
So. All right, um, further discussion? May I, is there anything you want to say on it? Okay. Call the vote, please. Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Behat? Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries. It definitely does show our commitment to, um, to lowering the taxes for the annexation area and for, for our residents, um, and for our business owners in Miami Springs. Okay, the next agenda item is, um, twelve A, request by Councilman Behat.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I asked for this before I knew that the, the Economic Development Task Force was going to be giving their, um, what's the way to and, uh, before I knew that Ken and Colliers were going to be, um, not presenting, but I think it would have been told us nicely. Uh, and we thinking, uh, when starting this discussion is that in, in lieu of, the the temporary setback with the annexation, uh, I, I felt like there was a need for us to consider what we could do in thirty-sixth street, uh, and it strikes me that the, the presentation so I says, I think that says that he was talking about trying to see in terms of outcomes. I think I think that kind of things that we can see, I think, I think how to get there. Um, but I think it's mentioned and, and, but it, it was also mentioned that in, in particular, focusing so it's considered and some consultants in terms of how to get the code. I think it's important to have some fresh eyes coming, uh, consultants, but you just have fresh eyes, but that have experience and so, so this is about, because every time things that on the council, other cities have gone through trial, sometimes successful, sometimes new. But I think, um, a little easy fix and something that strikes me has been identified in some places and sometimes six feet conception has different things, different in terms of like a central business district versus what happens on thirty-sixth street. I think that in this, this consensus that something needs to be done, also speaking, speaking to the future organization.
The tax base, uh, and, and infusing even on the development. And I think that some consultants that have experience in particular with land use and zoning, uh, because if not, like sometimes looking too generally can be really costly when it comes to this kind of, kind of, you know, uh, consulting. I think that, uh, that we could bring, uh, in a firm that could look just at like the Abraham Track, look at the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street corridor, maybe look at, look at that code in particular in terms of zoning, looking at some of the high restrictions. Uh, and, and giving us kind of a load of land and, and, and historically what situations looking just at, I think that's a good first start. Just wanted to start that conversation about that's a great place to start.
Some some things, something that we can propose some things that will be uh for us to define things so we can get them.
Hmm. Oh, it's really cheerful. I might respond to the to the council. Um, a a fair thought, no question that certainly. And 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 obviously.
So I think we already have what we need. I think we need to start making some decisions and how we want to go forward.
Ri- rather than spending another thirty five, forty grand to bring a consulting. Just my thought.
I one thing, though, is and and I've made this, I think I've said it here, or at least the Business and Economic Development Task Force. Um, you know, a study to get grant money for anything, which part of that will need grant money, not for the study itself, but to realize whatever the the findings are, recommendations. Um, it has to be a current study, you know, nobody gives you a mortgage on, you know, what property sold for in your area five years ago. You have to get it, what, the past six months, you know, the the sales in the past three months, six months or something? So even though we have, the city has had um a report done in the past, I don't think any of us were on the council. Then I don't know why they weren't implemented. Um. None of us can explain why they weren't implemented. I'm sure there were good reasons. Uh. You know, but this is a different council. Um, we've had a lot of work from our Business and Economic Development Task Force. Proposing things that we need to do. I think the atmosphere is right now um is really good for this. The timing is really um just great for this. So um, I agree with what Councilman Fihad is saying, um but I believe what we need to start with is a workshop. We need to start with the workshop. We need time to digest the report from the Business and Economic Development Task Force. Um, have a workshop, discuss what it is that obviously our city staff can't do this on their own. We're going to have to hire consultants, um you know, to market the city, to uh develop what um.
Code revision.
Code should be. Um Heidi, my understanding is the money that we set aside last budget was for um the signage. Uh, has that been done?
It's coming to you in January.
Okay, so we have money set aside in this recent budget session for code revisions again. Right? I believe we set aside.
Yes.
Yes.
However, those would be code revisions that we would handle. I think what you're talking about right now is much more comprehensive than like what that budget is. So I think um when I when I spoke with Councilman Fihad about this item, I think that in in my view of the of how this process would go is we would you know, once tonight we get, if we get direction, speak with William, get some sort of so either a solicitation or bring you proposals for you to consider. So that when you, I mean, I know we're in December, but budget season will be here before we know it. So I think what you want to know is how much is this process going to cost us so that we can budget for it? And come October one, be ready to launch with your consultant in place and your budget in place so that they can go ahead and do that process.
Okay.
And Mayor, I think one of the things that I guess what I'm trying to say is that uh I think we should consider how we could narrow the focus because I think that uh the more comprehensive we try to be, I mean, uh Heidi's told us before, you know, like, you know, yeah, we need to make changes to the code, but that you that's a rabbit hole that you could get lost in. Uh, I I I think that we should have uh, we should have a working group, but I guess the charge I was trying to put forth is that there are some things that have been identified by just about everybody, and I think a great place to start is that corner. And I think it would narrow the focus in terms of of, you know, getting the right people in here to to tell us, hey, what can we do? What are some some things that we can add that are actionable? Uh, that we could do right now to and in a focused manner to to help uh, you know, revise a code to to uh promote economic development just along the thirty six week uh corridor. And that would be a good place to start.
And I think it's very timely because we have the Miami uh Realtors Association building their headquarters in that corner. Um, which is going to be just a really striking building. And I believe we have another uh very large um office building um proposed in that area, the where the Chase Bank is, right?
That's um that, yeah, that's uh, well, that's
pending.
Nothing final yet, but they're thinking about a uh a hotel with a convention center.
Okay, so um that whole area, obviously, there's there's a lot of opportunities in that area. So perhaps what we need to do is we need time. Well, I know we need time to digest this report to think about, you know, the presentation that was made by uh Ken Crasnow and for and from the Business and Economic Development Task Force. And um let's schedule a workshop, Erica. You can reach out to us separately to try to schedule a workshop for the early part of the year, hopefully, January.
And I I uh through the chair, Mayor, if I might, um I'd like to congratulate Councilman Fihad for putting this on the agenda tonight. I think it was very timely that it's on there. All I was trying to say earlier was cautioning us all.
Yeah.
Uh, that we have a lot of data already. I mean, tons of data. And and I understand, Mayor, what you said to your point, to your point about it has to be updated. And that just costs us a ton of money every time we talk about it, you know, usually every two years, we're going back and hiring a consulting firm to come come do this. And we already know what they're gonna come back with.
Well, I think the commitment we have to make is if we're going to hire you know, consultants then or you know, surveys, uh studies on this, then we need to, you know, to be committed to make it happen. One of the challenges, of course, is that, you know, our city council changes every two years. Uh, you know, every two years we have elections. So every two years, um uh, there's a new mix up here and it's, you know, um, a lot of city councils, it's every four years that they change. So, you know, that's a challenge, but uh it's um it's still something that, you know, we need to go forward on um.
Right. Agreed. No, again, thank you, Councilman Fihad, for bringing that up.
And to the chair, just to piggyback on Mayor, um, we might have different councils, but I think the desire of the community has been the same for for quite some time now. So I think.
Yes.
Um, the dynamic as well is is changed as well from the last reports, but it's it's a desire and a want for for many years now.
And I think something we've all probably noticed um is and and Ken talked about it is the demographics. Um, we have a lot of young professionals in Miami Springs now, and I don't think that was the case. You know, years ago, uh, I'm constantly surprised at how many young professionals have chosen Miami Springs, not they didn't grow up here. They've chosen, they've looked around, and when they were looking to buy a home, um, they picked Miami Springs. So um, you know, it uh they have ideas, they they have new expectations, and um I think again, this is just very all coming together very timely. So, okay, so Eric will reach out to us to schedule a workshop. The workshops are open to the public. Everyone's invited to attend. Um, I want to make sure that.
Cool.
Pardon me?
No, I was just telling Councilman Fihad, good call.
Okay. All right.
And by the way, we will be having workshops probably January or February on the parking the downtown area, the parking study. Uh, we just got a a committee. Uh, we receive three proposals from three well well-known large companies. Uh, so we have a selection committee that's gonna meet and evaluate them and select one. Uh, we'll come back to you for approval on that, and then we'll be setting up workshops because uh what we want to do is have charrettes maybe at the community, at the adult community center, the big dining room, where they want to invite business owners, the uh uh task force, uh members, residents and all that, and and discuss the scope of work and what it is that we want them to uh to do for us. So that's gonna be in the works. I know uh Mr. Santin is on the selection committee. For the three uh he graciously accepted. Uh, I wanted him, I wanted somebody from the board there. So he's gonna be involved in selecting the company and then we'll take it from there. But that's coming up in January or February.
Good.
All right, um, so let's move to agenda item twelve B, a request by Councilwoman Bravo.
Um, Mayor, if you can allow me to move twelve C up just to get that out of the way. So um I follow a lot of cities, obviously, because I want to be in the know of what's happening around us and what I kind of like pick and choose what I think our city may benefit from based on the concept. Um, this one I got from the city of Coral Gables, Mr. Chovidge. It's called, it's a cycle machine. And what it is, it's a reverse vending machine. So Cycle is a digital recycling platform that connects to reverse vending machines, rewarding consumers for recycling their beverage containers at sports stadiums, events, uh, communities. I know that Coral Gables has them um has one at their recreation center, which is kind of cool because we have vending machines there. People do buy water bottles, sports bottles, um, and then you get incentivized. This is what I think it was provided on the agenda, but this is kind of like what it looks like. And then what happens is that you throw in your item, right? The machine scans it and it starts uh sorting it out. I guess it gets picked up on a weekly basis and as you um drop in your whatever is that you're gonna recycle, there's an app to this machine that incentivizes you based on what it is that you recycled a reward. So I think there's a there's partnerships amongst different um commercial uh or retail businesses and you start gaining points and you could go ahead and redeem your points for maybe I um it depends. It depends what it is. I I'm still trying to find the app. I was trying to uh reach out to to Paula. Um, because I was trying to find the app. There's just so many apps and I didn't want to come and say the wrong one. Um, so it's kind of cool. They had like a field trips from kids coming to the recreation center, uh incentivizing, showing them how to recycle, and it's a it's a constant exposure, I think, to the younger uh to the younger group that's that's coming in and out of our recreation centers. Um, just to give you an idea of what a reverse vending machine is, it accepts uh empty beverage containers, sorts and crushes cans, bottles for easy to manage materials, returns monetary rewards to consumers, allows for zero contamination, increases municipal and institutional recycling rates and track container barcodes. So I thought it was a cool idea. I know Mayor is a very big advocate on um sustainability and recycling. So I just wanted to bring it to the council for consideration of perhaps looking into this. I know that uh the city of Coral Gables received a grant for this machine, so that it was at no cost to them, and they did a ribbon cutting. It was it was pretty cool.
We have a little space wherever is that we can put it.
And we've done um since you sent us that, I don't know, Heidi's firm has done some work and uh Tammy did a lot of work on it. Um, and uh what the city of Coral Gables received a grant from the Florida Beverage Association for twenty five thousand dollars. Well, uh the problem is that that we're we're trying to check when it it's going to open up again, but that one was January twenty seventh. It ended January twenty seventh of this year. So I'm waiting to see him in January. They're gonna.
There's another grant opportunity.
Now I brought it up because it's kind of like there.
She's done some work on it where, for example, that the the machine is installed and then Coca-Cola, I think, is the one that services.
Was one of the sponsors.
In 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 UCF, right?
Yes.
So you get different sponsors that uh work with that. I think it's a great idea.
I I do. I'd like to thank Councilman Bravo for bringing this up because I think I I never even know what it was.
I think it's the city of Coral Gables and so many cities out there. We all look to each other's um for ideas.
This is, I think this, I think uh the 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 administration should continue to uh to pursue this as as they already have. Yeah, yeah.
Do we need a vote on this or?
So just a direction.
Just consensus.
Okay. Um, I think I I like the fact, too, that if we consider putting it where we already have a vending machine, so it's a really good fit of, you know, the vending machine is there and then we have this um recycling for them. So thank you, Councilwoman Bravo. I think that sounds wonderful.
Could that could that include like the high schools and 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 like Walter, your school and stuff where kids are and?
True.
Is that would that envelop that? I mean, would it would that be inclusive?
Sure.
We have to start just poking our fingers wherever that we can put it.
Okay, so the next can uh agenda item will then be twelve B.
Okay, perfect. Um, so I was just looking at, I know we had done and we passed a resolution on the new thresholds um for the city manager approvals and stuff like that. Um, I was wondering if the council would consider to opening up an RFP for a legal counsel. I have nothing against Heidi. I I I respect her as a person. Um, it's just, I think that in not only we've been with the same firm for such a long time, but I also see that, yes, we have our vote of confidence, but we haven't really followed the um the the procurement process. So in instance, I was looking at well, first of all, I don't even think we have a current agreement, right, Heidi? Like a current, because the only one that I have that was provided was for October fourteenth of two thousand and sixteen.
And that agreement is in place.
But was there anything in writing that was brought forward for the establishment of a renewal?
No, we renew it. It's continuous. There's no renewal.
Because I don't see here on the actual contract for continuation of services or an end date or any type of clause.
That's because the council is free to continue our services or terminate them at their.
Okay, perfect. So um in consideration of regardless of the vote of confidence, anything over a hundred thousand dollars has to be put through an RFP based on the new uh on the old and the new threshold. So um if we wanna be in com- I mean in compliance, I understand that we have the vote of confidence, but I also think that we have the due diligence to see what it is that is out there for for possible options. I am um I've had my personal experiences, but I uh with this this firm. But I'm really looking at the procurement aspect of this. We're not following um protocol here, and we have an average annual cost of two hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. That's well over. On the actual agreement, the one that we have, I don't see the retainer fee like what we're being charged monthly and what if there's any like cap, like I I I guess what I'm looking for is a more um solid agreement. And I understand that this is a continuation. But there's not been anything received in writing, even if you give a vote of confidence, I think that there should be some sort of formal document executed with the updated fees and the retainers and all that. I I think that our city deserves um of uh other perspectives. Um, you know, being a business owner of three relationships uh with business entities, they they kind of um they change, not necessarily that they're bad, but maybe we have to look at other opportunities uh to expand what it is that um is out there as far as legal services and to different perspectives. I mean, every legal company works in their own way and they have their own methods. But I'm really looking forward to um opening up this window of opportunity um based on our procurement and based that we have a vote of confidence coming up in March. I'm just putting it out there. You don't have to make a decision right now. Um, this is where I stand. Come March, my vote will we know, but I just wanted to season this because we should open this up for an RFP. I understand that White Street has been with us for a very long time. I appreciate their dedication. Um, but I don't think a vote of confidence should suffice the 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 due diligence that we have through the pro- procurement process.
Through the chair, uh in response to Councilman Bravo's presentation here, I would like to mention that this is not the private sector. This is governmental. Big difference. We have an agreement. We have a understanding. I think the vote of confidence is telltale of that relative to the law firm. If you have some other law firm in mind, I'm all I'm all ears, but I'm not hearing that.
No, I don't. I don't have another law firm in mind. It doesn't, I I've told Heidi too, I don't have another law firm. I just think that it's, I think that we should open up this opportunity for uh a legal counsel if they want to go ahead and bid, but I want to see different opportunities. We went with a recommendation of a magistrate um with their with um with Heidi's recommendation. I'm grateful. Uh, we were kind of like either pressed for time or we just, we had to make a decision. I don't know how the magistrate item is coming along. Um. The issue is, we have not had an RFP in how long for a legal counsel?
Well, why would we if we give them a vote of confidence? Why would we have?
Because I think I don't want.
An RFP is, an RFP is for something that the city needs. If we don't need it and we give them a, we give the firm a vote of confidence, why would we ask for an RFP?
I'm trying to avoid itemizing negatives because my.
I don't know what that means. I don't know what that means.
Not to talk about specific instances.
This law firm, this law firm that has represented this city for many years, has done us nothing but good, nothing. This law firm, this law firm that has represented this city for many years, it's done us nothing but good, nothing but good.
Well, we're trying to, to see how we can retain parking fees and fix a lot of items. Other than that, uh you, you're opening the again, I didn't want to get into this. It's the.
Oh, yeah, you did. You got it on the agenda.
Well, I have it on the agenda for discussion because I think we owe it to the city. I mean, just because we keep continuing to give a vote of confidence over and over and over, doesn't mean it's the best decision. Yes, I did it, I think, twice in a row because I'm getting to learn um how to work on the city matters. I'm not going to come here and sort like, you know, turning the wheels here, but I think that we owe it. There's been a lot of little things, a lot of good, but a lot of little things that I think that.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, are, uh, I'll ask this of, of William. Are you under the impression that we are on, out of compliance when it comes to procurement in terms of our agreements with White Serona?
Not at all.
Okay, so then that, that's off the table. That's, that's not a.
I mean, their, their contract, the contract that uh she's referencing was the first one that was signed with the company and that's by your vote of confidence every March and by your approving the budget for the, you're actually extending it every year.
Right, so, so we're, we're in compliance, so I don't, I don't, I, I, I don't see what.
But in additional to being in compliance, Walter, there's other items that need to be addressed and I don't think we can address it. To be honest, with this firm, because there's a conflict. My thing here is that if we're gonna go, I don't, the vote of confidence, I understand, has value, but I think that either if we're going to do vote of confidences, I think that the, I'm a very formal in, in that sense of, of agreements and paper. There should be something in writing because right now, I feel like, I mean, unless I'm missing something, we're being charged blindly. Because we have a, a contract from two thousand and sixteen that does not even stipulate the monthly, do we have a monthly retainer?
It's set forth in your annual budget, would you approve?
Okay, now, because I was thinking about the thirty thousand signage that we budgeted for October of twenty twenty one, we're going into twenty twenty three. And we still don't have the signage. Um, my issue too here, I mean, the U T D case. For me, it was such a waste of time because then we came up with an ordinance to kind of like reverse what was done. So instead of getting into these heated arguments and these hearings, we could have just let it go, created an ordinance. And then they haven't removed the, the U T D sign, but instead we went through like a back and forth case. We lost, you know, the code compliance board to remove all of these. Listen, I'm just giving examples.
No, but I, I'd like to, I'd like to just mention that they took us to court. We had no choice but to counter it.
Well, I know, but we didn't even have to get to that point. We really didn't. We just.
But we did.
But, but that was at the, at the, at, at the, at the rule of who. I mean, I'm looking for counsel. I, I see the U T D attorney getting very creative using our ordinance against us. I would expect the same thing from, from my legal counsel. Listen, I don't want to get into the little knickknacks, but when I, I've already, again, like I've already gotten over this with Heidi. I'm not here to, but I, I'm just, I don't have confidence and I just don't feel that.
Let me just, um, let me just say, I'm not sure.
I happen to have confidence.
Okay, let me just, um, um, I guess I'll make some points. Uh, first of all, um, I find that we've had this firm, I've been on the council going on six years, five and a half years. I believe this firm was hired the year before, not.
January twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, okay. And I started in the council April twenty seventeen, so it's going to be six years. That's not a long time. It hasn't been forever. I can tell you from personal experience, um, I am constantly on the phone. Uh, or in Zoom meetings with our attorneys about a host of items. Um, just uh, you, you know, the ones that, that come here before us are just the tip of the iceberg. There's so many other issues and I'm constantly having to um consult with our city attorneys. I find that this firm um having the wealth of attorneys that they have with different expertise, very often I'm on Zoom meetings with not just Heidi, but uh different ones of her colleagues, depending on their expertise, which is extremely important today's day and age. Um, we used to have before, I think we went to this firm, I believe we had one city attorney, Jen Sidon, um, uh. He, my understanding is very often um we had to contract out for expertise because he didn't have the expertise for it, so he would say, I can't do it and we'd have to contract with other firms. On a personal basis, um, uh, I find that their expertise is exceptional. Uh, it doesn't always work in our way. Uh, if you know the law, you know, legal things, even in court, don't always turn out just because of the letter of the law. Uh, there's so many factors involved, but as far as representation from this firm. Um, uh, I, I think they're uh extremely well qualified. Also, I want to caution you as something that by coincidence, I just mentioned a little earlier that when we have the form of government where every two years you're voting in new council members, it's extremely important to have the history, the professional expertise, the, the knowledge of um like our city manager, our assistant city manager, our attorney, because if not, we're constantly be like, has this been done before? Where's the status of this? And they provide us, our city attorney and our city manager and his staff provide us with that continuity and also history, knowledge of the background of when something comes up. This is what's happened in the past. So um, unless there are some glaring and, and it appears perhaps Councilwoman Bravo that you have some, some issues, you know, that have, and I, you haven't specified what, I mean, the U T D vote ultimately with the U T D vote and I voted with you against it, but um, it was ambiguous. Our code was ambiguous. When it comes down to it, our code was ambiguous. Um, we still got them to remove it. Um, there, you know, we don't allow murals. We went back and um corrected that. Um, that was, uh, it was time consuming. The other thing I want to warn you about, um, not warn, I guess I want to say. Caution is, our staff is very, very limited. So draining our staff on things like um an RFP or uh and, and very often, other things that unless we have really good reason to do that. Um, what takes away their time to prepare something isn't, you know, takes away from their time to do other items. And in the past, um, very often, we, because we're a small city, when we send out RFPs, and I don't know about this at all, it could be a, a large volume of, of attorneys that are interested in this. Um, what happens with other issues I know is we get no response. Um, because we're too small a city to attract someone, so um, there's a lot of staff time. But particularly with our city attorney, for me personally, um, I find that firm um provides an exceptional amount of expertise um and um timely because it's, if I need a meeting and it, which happens, I'll ask William, schedule a meeting for tomorrow and we have a Zoom meeting tomorrow and um that doesn't always happen.
Uh, through the chair, just one last thing and I'll, I'll close out. On our res, on the new thresholds. Um, I think it is this letter A E where it says methods, methods of competitive purchasing and procurement exceptions. It says, one, all purchases and contracts for supplies, materials and contractual services when the good faith estimated total cost thereof exceeding a hundred thousand shall utilize and be awarded pursuant to competitive sealed bidding process specific in this section. Two, however, if the city manager determines that the use of the competitive sealed bidding process is not practical or not advantageous to the city for the subject purchases in excess of a hundred thousand, the city may utilize a request for proposals or the request for qualification procedures set forth in, forth in the section. So William.
Do I have, like, would it be a disadvantage or not practable, practical um idea to perhaps in the future, come March, request for an RFP for legal counsel?
I think when you're reading the, the procurement code, I think you have to separate them. They have a contract that was signed in twenty seventeen and it's being renewed every year with the vote, with the vote of confidence. If council one year says, no, we don't give them a vote of confidence, whatever it is, then at that point, I do a procurement. Because I no longer have a legal contract.
So you can never express to us that you would be, that you would be interested in, in pursuing something like that.
It's, it's at our direction.
Okay, okay.
And, and, and it's a function of the vote of confidence.
I just wanted to throw it out there because I'm.
Okay, so I just.
To hurt in, in looking for other options.
Okay, I just want to chime in and, 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 and the councilwoman has every right to, to have, to have her opinion on, on, on anything that uh, that council does. I just, I gotta caution us because part of what, part of the things that you were talking about, were, you were alluding to basically city staff willfully and historically, uh, contractually being non-compliant and in terms of like what you were reading. And that's, I, and I don't, I don't see that to be the case. And you also kind of called into question whether or not the firm can represent us because of what you, what you said was conflict, uh, uh, of some type of conflict. So like, I'm, I'm all for any of us disagreeing with, with uh the efficacy of the firm in terms of how they represent us. But we got to be careful, particularly when they were on the dais and particularly because we have media outlets that like to, to take what happens during these meetings publicly and then kind of report on that. So like, when we start talking about like, well, we're not in compliance or there's a conflict like that, we've got to be careful about using that kind of language because then that's going to be, you know, like.
I didn't mean it in that sense.
I know, but that's.
We're gonna go through.
But that's how, that's how you said it.
Um, law, I mean, I think it should be applicable.
I get it, I get it, but.
Didn't mean that we're not doing what we're supposed to doing. I see, we can't, we shouldn't shy away from opening up an opportunity to give our city a different shed of light, because at the end of the day, all professionals and all legal councils, they're all very different.
Right, I get that.
If we need a shark, we hire a shark. If we need not so much of a shark, then we don't. So our, our city is small, right? And we have a lot of things coming up against us. So I'm just saying, for me, I don't have confidence. I'm just sharing it with you guys. I'm sorry, I did not mean to say that our city is not being complicit or compliant with their procedures. They're very professional and they are. But me learning and understanding, and now that we did this new resolution with the thresholds, it just sparked my plug. Um, I didn't want to come out and march and just say no. I wanted to give reason, the, the method to my madness, not just come out of nowhere and say no. I like to share my thoughts and my opinions and I think.
Right.
Um.
And, and I appreciate where you're coming from, Council, but something I've learned the hard way, right? Because I, I don't mind putting the, you know, putting my, the light on me. I've learned that some conversations are better said, you know, directly with staff, not when I'm on the dais. Because then I've found that some of the things I ask here, uh spur of the moment, or some of the things that I bring up then come back to bite us because it gets misinterpreted by the media and then it turns into a whole big thing. So I've learned my lesson that I, I like to ask all the questions and be very sure about the words that I use when I'm up here, because I know all the words that I use, say up here publicly. Even though it's recorded, sometimes those words get twisted. So I, I try, I've, I've learned to be very cautious about how I say things and you're, you're one fifth of the, of the decision-making. Uh, you know, force up here and, and, and you have a right to, to give your vote of uh no confidence. If that's what you choose to do in March and we all, we all share in that responsibility. I just, I just wanted to get that off my chest because some of the things that were said, and I know that that wasn't your intention, I appreciate that, that you corrected that for the record now, that that wasn't your intention, but we got to be careful about what we say because like we're saying some things and then we're gonna have to, you know, we're gonna have to deal with that because, because it, it opens up a can of worms. Uh, because things are inartfully said.
I'll just leave you with this. Before we hired this firm, our city attorney was Jen Seaton. Jen Seaton was with the city thirty some, how many years, I think it was? Never issued a procurement or ever. As, as long as council, we use them every year.
What?
But he was with us for over thirty years, wasn't he?
And I think the vote of confidence is a pretty um common way that governments, um, you know, with their uh city manager, with their uh city attorneys and with others, it's a way of, you know, saying if we vote, have the vote of confidence, we continue the way things are. If there isn't a vote of confidence, then by all means, um, you know, uh, it means that we have to look for um other opportunities, um, that'll come up in March. So we will all have a, an opportunity to um, to vote, give a vote of confidence for our city attorney in March. I appreciate um Councilwoman Bravo, um, your intent, which I think is that you want us to think about this and not spring it on the council in March without giving an opportunity. Um, uh, and, and I do agree with, with Councilman Behet. Um, said that we have to be careful how we phrase things. If there's something specific that you want to bring up now of a conflict of interest because, you know, I know you use that word and you said that's not your intent, but we need to know what it is. I mean, it can't just be thrown out there without, you know, the details of, of why you think that there's a conflict of interest, because if there is, then we should know about it. You know, then, um, if you know about it, you know that this.
Let me clarify, if you want, if you want me to, for the record, the conflict of interest is an example. I didn't want to get into this. But we had this whole argument about the parking fees. We established the parking fees. Now we're trying to, we were trying to reverse items on the ordinances. We've done that. There was um, some missed developer fees that we were not able to retain because of, you know, I guess the agreements weren't done that way. Um, I just wish that our legal counsel was perhaps a little bit more proactive in guiding us in that sense, perhaps saying, hey, before you open up these permits, you may want to have these parking fees established so we can go ahead and charge them and that would be uh required for them. You know, to open up permit, just simple little things like that. And because of the fact that they've done this ordinance, I mean, Heidi's been really helpful at times. But I think that maybe it's, it's a matter of, of it's kind of awkward because you're having the same firm that kind of guided you on this and put verbiage on paper and we, they can't, maybe they can't reverse what they've done. I don't know. That's what I mean by conflict of interest. I don't mean any conflict of interest of uh any party who's personally involved in anything. Um, it's just, i- it's hard to kind of ask a, a firm to reverse something that they've done and guided on.
But.
But we're just limited to.
Mayor, can I, can I just chime in? Because that, that was a mischaracterization. It's, it's a shame that we're still rehashing this. The city attorney, and I've opened this for anybody to try to correct me if I'm wrong. The city attorney, who wasn't our current city attorney, but it was the same firm, had nothing to do with that. Though, though the credits that were giving, uh, that were given for the dozen or so parking spaces were done uh as part of the negotiations with them, it had nothing to do with a miss, that's part of the misinformation that we're dealing with. I cannot believe that we're still having to bring this up. I know.
I, I well understand what he's saying.
Right, like that's the problem.
That I said, I remember on that meeting specifically, I said, nothing is not definitive. It, it could be perhaps.
We, we.
For discussion.
We went back, I encourage you to go back to the me, to the meeting where we discussed when this was approved by the council at the time. There was, there was no missed opportunity. There was nothing, there was no fee that was supposed to be assessed. It was clear at the time uh what was agreed upon and negotiating with the developer. Am I wrong?
No, you're absolutely right.
That we've discussed it. That's part of what we're, that's part of the issue that we have is that we're fighting this misinformation. We have people that are emailing us. Because unfortunately, they've bought into this misinformation. I don't know how more clear we can be. We've had meetings where William read into the record, uh, like we, we cite the actual timestamp on the videos back in two thousand nineteen or whenever it, it was done, like that this is part of the problem where we I, I just, I don't even know what else to do. Like, we've talked about this. Uh, and I, I only say this because you bring it up as, as an example, the conflict, like we, we have to be informed. And we have to be careful about what we say because that's, that, that, that gives life to the misinformation that causes the issues that we're dealing with.
I think it gives life to clarity too, Walter. I mean, I think that I could go back to the meeting again and I remember looking and I said, well, it's open, that resolution is not signed, sealed, delivered. It seems like it's open ended.
Let's not go delve into that. That, that was what you meant as, as with the parking.
Thank you.
Like gave clarity to what you meant of the conflict of interest. So, all right, um.
And, and just to close out on the item, if I might, Mayor, there's only one person in, in this town publicly that is, that has cited that. And I'm not going to mention any names.
Okay, so um, again.
Uh, a site. I'm not gonna spend two years of my life, perhaps four, on a, on a website.
Okay.
No, no, I'm talking about an individual.
So um, we, in March, we do a, a vote of confidence and obviously um every member of the council will uh vote. But a vote of confidence is a pretty standard way to um, to continue a relationship with the government. Um, okay, so the next agenda item is, um.
Going back.
Oh, going back to eleven A. All right. I, um, this is a resolution of the, the mayor and the city council to appoint an interim council member to fill the vacancy in group four on the city council. This is the vacancy that was created by um our former council member, Victor Vasquez, who um, uh, had to resign because he was running for an elected office. And he resigned last month, so um I am going to pass the gavel to uh.
Whoever.
Well, it would be the vice mayor. Empty, so it goes to the next vice mayor. So Councilwoman, if you would pass the gavel to our councilmen because I wanted to um start this off. I know with this process, we did this once before and it can go around and around and, you know, people get disappointed and, you know, uh. around and around and you know, people get disappointed and you know, um, I wanted to uh make the first motion for uh the person that I would like to nominate for the commission um for the vacant seat and it's George Loeb. And he's sitting right there, George, if you wouldn't mind coming up. Um. I think we're all familiar with uh George is a former council member. I'm going to see if I can read your uh brief bio. But um George has been a resident of Miami Springs. He and his wife Nora and their two lovely daughters who are grown now have been uh living in Miami Springs since the nineteen ninety six, I think. Right? Um, they are homeowners here and uh Nora is a school teacher. And retired. Oh, that's right.
What?
And George has been in IT in the IT field for thirty two years. He currently works for Certified Network Professionals Inc. Um, which is contracted to um the Miami International Airport in char- charge of their security network. He served on the council for three terms from twenty oh nine to twenty fifteen. He has served as interim council member in the past in twenty twenty. And he's also um served as Optimist Club, the Miami Springs Optimist Club, as a secretary, treasurer, president and member. Um, this is a position, it's a vacancy that uh uh we will be having elections in April. So it's a short term vacancy. To me, um, I think it's really important that we choose, and I know that there's several people in Miami Springs um that have reached out to us that said they were interested. However, I feel that um it's really important that we have someone serve in this position who can hit the ground running. Obviously, someone who is a former council member, there's for all of us, there's a learning curve when you get elected to the council, no matter how much you've kept up with the issues, you know, there's a learning curve of knowing the procedures of 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 knowing um how the agenda works, how the count of meetings works, and also what the responsibilities are. So um I think um George Loeb, who graciously had reached out to all of us and sent emails um early on when he knew that we were gonna have to fill an interim position um stating that he was available um would be a great uh choice for for this position. Um, the other thing that we had um mentioned is that um at least I personally feel that whoever is in this interim position should be someone that is not planning to run in April because it gives an unfair advantage to um, you know, to whoever wants to run in April if we've already appointed someone and in essence, they become an incumbent in that seat. Um, so with that said, um, I make the motion to um uh nominate George Loeb and I hope that um I will have the council join me and um and having him uh serve for the next few uh months in our seat, seat four.
If you have any questions of me, I'm here.
If Nora's retired, maybe we can nominate her to be.
Right?
She and Nora.
Um.
Somebody have. I have second. Is there a second? Okay. Then the motion dies. I'll take back the gavel.
You shall. To the chair, if I might, mayor. Um. I don't have any, listen, you almost got a second out of me. However, uh and George is a good friend of mine, him and his family, known him for years. He did a nice job sitting up here for two terms, three, three terms, sorry. Um, but he's done it already. He's already fulfilled what he said he would do for us. I think we need to mix it up a little. I'm gonna make a recommendation and a motion at the same time to nominate Ken Amendola. Kenny Amendola, uh Amendola Beverages, family business for years, lived in Miami Springs for what, twenty six years now, I think. Um, lives in Hunting Lodge, has the Halloween parties and the New Year's Eve parties every year and stuff. He sat on the golf course review board in some of the most dark times that we have had in this city relative to the golf course, back to the days of Dan Bradley and stuff. Um, Ken is one of the most level headed individuals, doesn't happen to share the same political affiliation as I do. But I love the guy because he's level headed and he knows how to look at an issue and make it happen. And 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 his his service to the city over the years, not that George hasn't, I'm not saying that George has done wonderfully. But I think I think it's 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 an opportunity for a guy that's never served and he won't be an elected official, he'll be an appointed official for three months. Uh, or however, you know, until the election. Um, I think Ken would be an excellent choice to be sitting up here with the four of us. That's my motion.
Is there a second? Okay, the motion dies.
Fine. I said what I had to, I said what I said.
A.
Mayor, I'd like to make a nomination. Okay, so uh I would like to nominate uh that Oscar Rich who's um sitting in the council chambers. So I've known that for about uh thirty five or so years when I was a young boy scout. He was a little bit older than me. He was a scout leader uh in troop four twenty five uh and and since then, he so he's lived fifty years in the city of Miami Springs. Uh, very involved as a youth. Uh, he was a leader, he was somebody that I looked up to. Uh, he's been a firefighter for the city of Coral Gables for thirty years. He's a captain uh with the Coral Gables Fire Department. Um, and uh he's somebody who's been very active. Uh, he was active in Boy Scouts as an adult and an adult scout leader and very active and and led the PTO uh when his kids were were in school within our public school feeder pattern. Uh, he's very engaged, uh thoughtful and I'd like uh I'd like to make a motion to nominate that Oscar Rich to uh fill the vacancy.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. No, he's a good guy, right? You know, he you would approve of him too. Right? Any further discussion?
Call the vote, please.
Councilman Best?
Nay.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Behet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
No.
The motion fails.
Okay, I think you're gonna have to.
Mexican standover.
So we have another.
Okay, is there another motion?
I don't have anybody.
I have a motion.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I uh would like to nominate uh George Loeb. I don't have to read your bio, do I?
Well.
I'll second that.
Well, you open your mouth.
All right, I. Councilwoman, I understand.
Yeah, it works.
Coliva? Yeah, that's your call, not mine.
Councilman Best?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Excuse me, Councilman Behet?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes, welcome, Councilman.
Motion.
Loeb, and I I definitely want to say, and I mean this from the heart, um to um that and Ken and others that have volunteered to do this, um, we're very, very grateful and I and I know that you know it um for you stepping up for offering to help us. Um, my personal, and I and I've spoken to the ones that were interested is that I just feel that we're better served by someone who has the experience on the council for these next few months. Um, to, you know, because of the learning curve that, you know, just no matter how, even if you you've served as an elected official somewhere else, there's a learning curve of being here at this city. Um, but we greatly, greatly appreciate everything you've done for our community, um, that and um and Ken, who's not here, but.
Yeah, mayor, didn't one time when this happened before, didn't you put Mark Trobridge up for that? I'm just thinking out loud and remembering back. I thought.
Bart and uh.
Continue to serve bridge.
Um, I I I could have appointed you like right now.
Yeah.
All right, so.
I apologize when I was.
George, can you?
Mayor, can I apologize when I was talking during my discussion item, I had Tom right in front of me and I I called Mark Tom. So I apologize, Mark, my apologies.
Okay. So.
But he still took credit for it. He did it correctly.
That's because he's got class.
Is does George get sworn in at the next council meeting? Uh, what happens? Um.
I think so.
I think Madam Clerk knows that he meets the qualifications for office. Um, unlike others who she might need to research, so we can swear him in now or we can.
Let's go ahead and swear him in.
Well, no, no, not the first one.
Maybe he wants Nora to be here for that. I don't know.
Oh.
Wait, it's not gonna be Nora sitting up here?
Formal swearing in um with the clerk um and then we can do a ceremonial swearing in at the next meeting.
Okay, but let's go ahead and and swear him in that. That way we already have it taken care of if there's um and yes, and we can take our.
For the Gazette.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so uh Erica, do you do that now?
Yeah.
To, oh.
Wow.
I haven't.
For the formal swearing in, he should wear a powdered wig.
George, you're prepared.
Get like really.
Corduroy going there. I love it.
Right hand. I state your name.
I, George Loeb.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And I will.
And I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Miami Springs.
The city of Miami Springs.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member. Congratulations.
And uh the big question is the parties that Ken throws, will you be throwing similar ones?
Ah, oh, I wow. Congratulations, George.
He comes up now.
Sure he can.
Okay, so um I think we're pretty much caught up. We're to the reports.
We are.
From our city attorney.
I'll be brief, mayor. Um, as you know, I've mentioned that there's some charter amendments that we've talked about in the past that uh Councilman Behet brought up. We'll be bringing a resolution at the second January meeting to approve the ballot language for that. Um, the deadline to get any questions on the ballot, whether they're charter amendments or bond issuances, if you were interested in doing something like that, is February second. So that's why we'll have it on the second January meeting. Um, at that time, I I think that there is interest or there's been some discussion I've heard through the grapevine about perhaps a charter amendment as a result of the task force recommendations. So if you would like to bring that forward, please let me know. And I'm happy to provide you with some sample language at the first January meeting. So my plan is at the first January meeting, I'll show you some different samples of language on any charter amendments. I have two that the um that Erica and I have discussed. Um, and so we'll be bringing those to you. One of them is uh to address how we address vacancies in the future as well as your qualifying period. It's incredibly long. Um, longer than any other city uh in the county. So those are two that we would like to just present to you for your consideration. And then the third is of course, or maybe the first is of course, the one presented by Councilman Fahad that you approved earlier this year. And then to the extent you have any others that you would like us to prepare, please let us know. Um, please reach out to me or William ahead of the first January meeting. Well before that meeting, the agenda goes out right when we come back um after the New Year. So um ballot questions are seventy five words long and have fifteen word titles. So getting what you want to say in some sort of coherent fashion that makes sense to the voters is not the easiest of tasks. It's not simple. Um, so please just let us know and we're happy.
So I guess we, if it's going to be possible charter amendments based on recommendations from the um Business and Economic Development Task Force, but we need to have the workshop for that first. Um, we've kind of in a timeline crunch that we probably need to have the workshop early January.
Yeah.
So that we can let you know.
Not to say that we can't discuss it for the first time at the second January meeting. It's just I would need to have very well thought out and drafted language by that meeting because.
February two, you said it's gonna be.
Second January.
Right, so that's why the second, I'm thinking the second January.
Yep.
Um, you know, I I I I'm not a proponent of adding more meetings. Um, but if we were in a time crunch, we could of course accommodate that.
And Heidi, for tweaking our updating our comprehensive plan, that's different. That doesn't have to be anything to do with our election or anything. We do that. Okay. All right, anything else?
Um, I guess this is our last meeting of this year, so I want to wish everybody a happy holiday season.
Thank you, you too, and to to the firm too, all the uh, by the way, um the um, who is it that worked with the noise ordinance?
Eric Calkman.
Eric.
Eric.
Did a great job. Um. Okay, our city manager.
With Factory Town, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, Eric.
Thank you, mayor. Um, last week I had the opportunity to visit the Miami Regional University, uh South Royal, Punxsiana. Uh, they had a uh an event because uh finally after about six or seven years of work, they were accredited to um to um uh offer uh PhD programs in nursing. So she uh she explained to me the process and it it was unbelievable. And then because of COVID, it was delayed and all that, but it was it's a six. It was almost a seven year process. So they're very happy and um uh they're a great, I mean, they started with uh forty students. Right now they have an enrollment of about twenty five hundred.
Wow.
This was before the PhD.
William, William, I when I read that, that you text, you you shot that to all of us. I know that and and I I ran that by my daughter who's a nurse practitioner. I says, Kristen, you might have an opportunity to go for PhD. And she goes, Dad, is it research or clinical? She goes, big difference. Do you know?
Well, I think it's clinical.
Clinical?
Yeah.
Okay. Right?
Uh, so they were happy. The other thing that uh impressive, you haven't uh gone by there, the Realtors Building. They started working on there, uh they're uh doing the excavations and all that. And uh in case you get any calls, there's a little section of Oakwood that they asked for us to close off so that they could get the heavy equipment going in and out of there. So it's it's a small section, so we told them to go ahead and use that. Same thing we did with the Springstown Center. Um, and we've done it with hotels that have asked us for certain streets to be uh because you know, there's constantly trucks and cement trucks coming in and out of there, so they needed that space, so we told them to go ahead and do, it's about half a block of uh Oakwood. So if you have a chance, go by there, they're moving really fast. And that's gonna be a beautiful building for that area. Other than that, I want to wish everybody uh Merry Christmas and uh Happy New Year before our next meeting. And I think uh she has some events.
Yes.
Thanks.
Saturday, December seventeenth, the uh Miami's uh Springs Parks and Recreation Department has their golf cart holiday parade. Uh, that parade kicks off at six thirty uh and it'll be heading south on Curtis Parkway uh pathway. Uh, the last day to uh register to be a participant in that parade is December fifteenth and you can email um Caitlin Smith at the uh Recreation Department. Also, that same day is the holiday event um by the Girl Scout Troop, uh twenty five sixty four from se- six to ten uh at one ninety westward in front of the in front of City Hall for um boarding passes or to register uh your decorated home co- um to register your decorated home. Uh, you can go ahead and do that. We have also the dedication of the memorial monument uh for that fiftieth uh anniversary for the Eastern Flight four oh one um which is on the twenty ninth at one PM and that's where that new um the grassy median right in front of the driving range. Um, where that new uh Miami Springs uh sign is, entrance sign is. Um, so for those of you who are attending, um, I think they want to try to get a semi headcount. Um, so if you could email um your name and the number in your party to F L T four oh one memorial at gmail dot com. So that's F L T abbreviated for flight, four oh one memorial at gmail dot com. That's it.
And the signing, uh, the ribbon cutting for the Miami Springs sign, did you mention that?
Oh, Friday.
Friday, Friday, sixteen, ten AM.
At ten AM.
This coming Friday, right?
This coming Friday.
Right.
At ten in the morning, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, Councilman Best?
Uh, what was I gonna say? Uh. In le- in lieu of that, Merry Christmas to each and every one of you. Oh, I know it. See, you got me. Um, the Pelican Playhouse has a production coming up in January. And I gotta tell you, this is, you will let, you will, you'll fall off your chair laughing at this. This is too funny. We've been working on this now for three and a half months and uh it it there's there's a lot of great actors in it, trust me. So please keep that in mind going forward. You'll see it in the in the Gazette, I'm sure. Uh, advertised and also on the on the website for the city. Um. And aside from that, congratulations, Councilman Loeb, and uh happy merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, whatever to each and every one of you guys. Enjoy sitting up here with you all.
Thank you.
And to this, and to everyone in the audience and at. And to this, and to everyone in the audience and at home as well.
Councilman Bravo?
Um, no, just, uh, wanna wish everybody, uh, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Um, thank you, Loeb, for putting your foot in the door again. Uh, your resilience is incredible. You're brave. Um, I think, uh, this will work out, and, um, that's it. I have nothing else to report.
Okay, Councilman Behet?
Thank you, just wishing everybody, uh, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to everyone.
Well.
And Councilman Loeb.
Vice Mayor, excuse me, you stepped into the vice mayor.
How does that happen? Well.
I just wanted to thank you all up here. Um, thank you for everybody that put their hat in the, in, you know, in the ring, sort of say. Um, thi, this is, um, a, a job that I take seriously. Um, I, I've done it and I enjoy doing it. And, um, I, I, I don't want to do it for a long time, so this is perfect for me. Uh, I hope, uh, to do the job to the best of my ability, and, um, I want to thank you all. Happy holidays, everyone. Good night. Good news be yours.
There you go. I was, I was waiting for that.
And I just wanted to, um, to thank you, Councilman, uh, uh, Vice Mayor, for again, offering your service, and, and like you said, for all the other residents that, um, you know, not a law all, there was a handful that were interested in serving. We greatly, greatly appreciate your stepping up and, and letting us know you're interested. Let's see, this morning I attended the, um, swearing-in ceremony for, um, Miami Dade. The, all the Miami Dade Commissioners, it was at the Arch Center, it was a beautiful ceremony, and it was for our new Miami Dade Commissioner, Kevin Cabrera, plus the other four, um, Miami Dade Commissioners that, um, that, uh, were elected recently. So that was really nice. Um, and what else did I want to say? We are meeting with, uh, business owners. We have, William and I have renewed, um, started up meetings again with the business owners in the annexation area to continue the dialogue, to let them know, um, about our new, um, uh, millage that has been reduced substantially, um, and other information. So, um, we're looking forward to the opportunity to meeting with them. And the other thing I just wanted to say is, and I know Charlie's not here, but I, I'm not sure if it's Charlie and other business owners or if it was through the Rotary Club that they put up the Christmas trees on Curtis Parkway along with.
It was through the Rotary.
Was it through the Rotary, um, it just.
George Santin had a lot to do with that.
And George, thank you. Um, I, I know when we leave here, we all got here when it was still kind of daylight, and when we leave here, um, it will just sparkle. Our city just becomes like magic over the holidays. I mean, I, I think it's pretty magical year-round, but particularly these times. So I'm looking forward to stepping out into those, um, tw, uh, beautiful lights. And, and thank you to all the business owners that have supported that project to make Westward Drive to sparkle during Christmas. And now, before everyone, uh, leaves, I want to wish everyone, um, a wonderful, um, blessed holiday season. Um, may all your wishes come true. Um, and I wanted to make sure we get a photo for, um, Tom with our new, um, council. This meeting is adjourned.
Merry Christmas, Mayor.